I'd ask us all to rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If we could take the roll, please, Joette?
Mr. Graff.
Here.
Mayor Neyer. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Knock.
Here.
Mr. McMurdo.
Here.
Motion to excuse.
I'd move we excuse Mayor because he's on a company business.
I second that.
Uh, Ms. Knock.
Yay.
Mr. McMurdo.
Yay.
Mr. Graff.
Yay.
Uh, Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
And have we all had a chance to review the minutes of our February fourteenth meeting?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept those.
I'll second it.
Mr. Graff.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Ms. Knock.
Yay.
Mr. McMurdo.
Yay.
At this point, I think we've heard from all of our visitors. We've got no old business. And again, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight. I hope I speak for the rest of our board here. I love living in a community where people care this much. First, we've got a plat approval.
Uh, this is a plat approval brought before us by Cincinnati ISH LLC. So, all proposed record plots are approved by Planning Commission. This location is 10035 West Road. The applicant is requesting approval of a plat that clearly identifies the area to the west of parcel A to allow for future public improvements. On the east boundary, the applicant is preserving the initial egress easement that was recorded in 2017. The background on this is the applicant split the existing parcel into five parcels for future sale or development in 2017. Parcel A to have direct access from West Road. Parcel B, D, and E has access from the ingress and egress easement between the lots. And Parcel C has direct access from Corner Brook Road. In summary, the plat has been reviewed by the city engineer and approved as meeting the standards for boundary surveys as defined in chapter forty-seven thirty-three through thirty-seven of the Ohio Administrative Code. Building and zoning staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval with the condition that the road width meets the city standard.
I mean, do we have anyone here on that one?
No, they were here and are not here anymore.
Okay. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on that, but my thought, I think this makes sense and I think they're just trying to convey to reconfigure and move some future roadway or future easement areas up to adjoining parcel owners. I would, my thought on this is as long as they, these are permanently tied to one of the existing neighboring parcels and not a separate parcel, then I think I'm fine with it. I don't know if anyone else had any thoughts?
Wilson moves for approval.
I will second it.
Mr. McMurdo.
Yay with the conditions that Andy said.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Graff?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Ms. Knock?
Yay.
Next, we have four hundred Harrison Avenue, the laundromat. Joette, if you could read the staff report, please?
Uh, yes, this is part of the public hearing. All proposed conditional uses are reviewed by Planning Commission and for approval per section, oh, wait a minute, I'm on the wrong one, sorry about that. Um, all proposed conditional uses in the downtown redevelopment district are reviewed by Planning Commission and City Council for approval per section eleven forty-three oh seven of the Harrison zoning regulations. This property is at four hundred Harrison Avenue. The applicant is requesting a conditional use approval to open a twenty-four hour laundromat at this location. The application must be reviewed and approved by Planning Commission and City Council, which states conditional uses that require Planning Commission and City Council approval number six, any other use determined by the Planning Commission and City Council to be similar to those uses listed within this section. There is no use within this section, which is why we're here for a conditional use. The building at four hundred Harrison was previously a service station that has been vacant for several years. The applicant is proposing to open a twenty-four hour laundromat to serve the residents of the downtown area. There will be fifteen to twenty machines installed in the space for use on a self-serve basis. The owner of the location sees the conditional use request as an asset to the downtown by providing a service to people within walking distance of where they live. Approval of the conditional use will require building and zoning permits to be reviewed and approved per the Harrison zoning regulations for the downtown redevelopment district. The applicant did not, at this time, provide information related to the interior floor plan, the vehicular pedestrian ways or parking areas, landscape areas, information regarding any color changes or exterior improvements. In looking at eleven forty-seven oh seven, purpose, the purpose of the DRD is to provide and encourage further expansion and renewal in the historical core business area of the city. A variety of business, institutional, public, semi-public, cultural, and other related uses are encouraged in an effort to provide the mix of activities necessary to maintain a walkable retail environment. The emphasis for street-level downtown business should be retail and food establishments. Those businesses that substantially increase retail foot traffic during regular business hours are highly encouraged. While there is a laundromat located at four ninety South State Street, that business was already in place when the district boundaries were expanded to that area. Also, a laundromat was approved by Planning Commission at two oh two dash two oh four North State Street in 2019 as part of a combination drive-through laundromat/restaurant concept. The laundromat portion was to have abbreviated hours and not twenty-four hours. Since the latter concept was never completed, the owner will have to resubmit an application for consideration of the new concept in order to begin. Both of the two properties described above on State Street are not within what is considered as the core retail area of the first four blocks of downtown. A laundromat at four hundred Harrison Avenue is not in approved use of section eleven forty-seven and does not fulfill the intent purpose as described above for the historical business area and does not add to the retail environment. Furthermore, the request for an unattended twenty-four hour operation is outside the permitted hours for the DRD businesses. Planning Commission and City Council have recently considered the hours of operations for DRD businesses as they relate to the impact upon residents of the area, choosing to limit hours to eleven PM Sunday through Thursday and one AM on Friday and Saturday. If Planning Commission makes a positive recommendation to City Council for conditional use for a laundromat at four hundred Harrison Avenue, we recommend the following items be required as conditions of the approval. Interior floor plans of scale will be provided and approved by building and zoning before any interior renovations begin. A design for vehicular and pedestrian ways, parking areas, and landscaping will be provided and completed before an occupancy permit is granted. The broken concrete will be replaced with new concrete as part of the parking landscape area. Color changes and exterior improvements will be submitted and approved by building and zoning and completed before occupancy permit is issued. The business would be operated only during their permitted open hours in the DRD. The applicant will submit an interior and exterior lighting plan to be approved and installed before an occupancy permit is issued. Surveillance cameras will be installed inside and out and record activities at the property within seventy-two hours of recorded footage maintained for police review if needed. Windows installed to allow police to drive by and see in easily as part of the exterior improvements submitted. An emergency slash panic button installed inside with an emergency beacon. And all of the above items will be maintained to retain an occup, will be, sorry, will be maintained to retain an occupancy permit.
Any comments on that? Yes, um, thank you, Shannon. I'll get that on the mic. We were also presented with a letter from the DRD Board who recommended, or who asked that we deny this request. Do we have a definition of retail?
Yes, it is in the book.
In the book?
And particularly in the DRD section, eleven forty-seven.
Eleven forty-three oh seven.
Oh, you should read that, don't you?
Yeah, it basically, um, talks about what is permitted in the DRD. And this use is not permitted use. That's why it's brought forward to use as a conditional use. But basically, the DRD talks about restaurants, um, so downtime, the development, the design standards, and permitted uses, basically talks about quality of the first course of business, not commercial facilities, parks, business, private park, class, plus offices, government state local offices, public library, museums, art galleries, craft shops, pharmacy, sale good products, utilities, separate rooms, such as gasoline, oil, chemicals, and so forth. Dressmaking, tailoring, bakery, restaurants, studios related to music and art and crafts, banks and other financial institutions, barber shop, beauty salons, pet grooming, governmental offices, print shops, walk-up windows and counters for outside service, prevented for banks, and ice cream parlors and coffee shops, restaurants and pubs that serve alcohol. But that, that's why they're asking for conditional.
Conditional, because it doesn't, okay.
As a resident of the DRD, I actually polled the, my surrounding neighbors and none of them were in favor of this type of business, only blocks within us, especially twenty-four hours. So, I, I will recommend that we deny this application.
Do we always recommend approval?
Yes, we, again, I was gonna say, what we have here is a situation where we're making a recommendation, so would that be a, a making motion to, to disapprove, recommendation that council disapprove, correct?
Well, I think typically you do not say make a recommendation to approve and then you vote yes.
Right, right, so. Right, so that would be a, a motion to disapprove.
Oh, so we can't make a motion?
It would be a motion to approve, but then everyone would vote yay or nay.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Can I speak to his question? Can I speak to his question? I think his question was, how do we define retail? I'd love to know the answer to that question. Walk-in business?
He just read it.
But we didn't define it. We talked about what it looks like. We talked about walk-in business. We talked about walk-up business. We talked about bakeries. We talked about coffee shops. We talked about banks. We talked about financial institutes. We talked about a lot of things, but we didn't define what retail is.
The DRD is defined by explicit statements.
Okay, so, again, though, I think what his question was, and I'm speaking to that, is how do we define retail?
You can define it by explicit statements, but the DRD.
Okay, and then, again, my question is, if it's not in that section, I guess I would have to Google that. That's what most people go off these days. Right, how do we define retail? It's a walk-in type of business.
Ours is defined right in the, what he just read. And if it's not in what he just read, it's not approved.
Do you have your phone in front of you? Can you Google, can you Google a retail business for me?
No, I don't have to Google it. It's written right in our ordinance right there.
Well, it can be written in ordinance, but all we did was define examples of a retail-type business. We didn't define retail business.
I think we did with what he said right there. A laundromat is not included.
I, I don't think we defined a retail business. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we defined that. Or services, when we talk about a bank, right, or a laundromat, or a bakery, or a tailor, or a bar that sells a drink, or, you know, I, I think we have a lot of retail services on that main strip. I think we do. So, that's my question, is how do we define retail?
If a business such as a, um, an insurance agency, or, uh, attorney wanted to put an office there, they would not meet the DRD section and they would also have to come for conditional support.
Correct, but do we call that retail? Because it's a service. It's a sold service. So, I guess that's my question, and I'm speaking to his question, is how do we define retail? He didn't say, what is retail? He didn't say, in our section, whatever, and I can't speak to that because I don't know.
Okay, I, I Googled it.
What's that look like?
Examples of retail laundry and, retail laundry and dry cleaning outlets, but not including laundry and dry cleaning plants, and not including coin-operated laundries and dry cleaning establishments commonly called laundromats and laundrette's.
So, what's the definition of retail?
Well, I'm just reading, I Googled, is a, is a laundromat considered retail? And what I get on Google is no.
Okay, is it, is an attorney's office considered retail?
No, it's an office.
There's one on the main drag. It's between eighteen sixty and heist.
Well, if they came.
Been there for years.
Yeah, and if they came before us, we would say, they would be at the same standard as you, which would be, that's a conditional use, and we would vote yay or nay whether we wanted that conditional use.
And, uh, the, the reason that they are there is because they were there before the DRD was established.
And I think that's a fair shake, and that's why my question is, what is retail? The next question I have is, who else is gonna develop that building? I've had calls. Everyone's put a service station back in there. I can leave it vacant. We can let the paint fall off of it. It doesn't matter to me. I wanna do something to add to the community. I've had old folks that are close to that area that walked up and said, what do you think you wanna do? And I said, I think we're talking about maybe putting a laundromat in, right? It's passive income. It's something that we can monitor. We can make the building nice again. It, it creates some tax base, right? With the income that we create there. I think it's a hard push to have a bunch of buildings on a main drag and everybody wants this beautiful downtown. Where, where's, where's the tax dollars? Where's the, you know, everybody says, well, well, there's money if you write this, this, or, or, there's money there, twenty-five hundred, three grand for this. Everybody knows that does anything with a property, twenty-five hundred dollars doesn't go anywhere. Homeowners know that, right? So, with that said, do we leave it vacant, or do we do something with it? That's my question. Not for sale. Not for sale.
How do, the motion should be?
A motion to approve, and then you vote yes or no.
That your motion?
Okay, yeah. I make a motion to approve.
Mr. McMurdo?
Oh, you need a second, don't you?
Oh, yes, I need a second. I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself.
I'll second, to approve.
Okay, Mr. Graff?
Nay.
Uh, Mr. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Knock?
Nay.
Mr. McMurdo?
Nay.
Should not approve. Well, that's a recommendation to council, so.
Yes, recommendation to council.
So, this will go to City Council.
So, when's that meeting?
Um.
Be discussed with the next city council meeting? Okay. It'll eventually come to council, and council will either affirm the vote here, or if they want to have it there, a supermajority of five would have to vote to approve it.
Okay, and then, and then if they don't approve it, who do, who, what do we do there? Gotcha.
Is it the twenty-first?
Because it has to have time to be.
No, I get that. I just, when, when is that meeting? I, I just need to know that.
It's the eighteenth. April eighteenth.
Can you make sure you shoot me an email on that one? Thank you. I'll make sure I'm here for that. I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you. You guys have a good one.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, next on our agenda is one zero two six four Harrison Avenue, the used car lot. We could get the staff report on that, please.
This is coming before the Board because all proposed conditional uses are reviewed by Planning Commission for approval per section eleven forty-three oh six of the Harrison zoning regulations. The applicant is requesting a conditional use approval to open a small used truck lot at this location. This application must be reviewed and approved by Planning Commission per section eleven forty-three oh six, which lists automotive sales and service as a conditional use in a B general business zone. The building at one oh two six four Harrison Avenue was previously a single-family residence that is now used for business. The applicant opened the business without filing any, filing any zoning use applications. It was notified by the building and zoning department that the process included an application to be considered by Planning Commission. His continued operation depends on the recommended, recommended approval by PC. No, only in the DRD.
Okay, if that's right, I'm sorry.
Only in the DRD. The applicant is proposing to open a used truck lot at the location. Queen City Motors has been in business since nineteen ninety-one and has another location in Loveland, Ohio. The site is located between the Schultz Development property and an auto body repair shop, which is Randy Lane's. The owner of the location sees this conditional use request as an asset to the city of Harrison by bringing new clients to this location and helping the surrounding companies generate business. The use is similar to the others in the area and would not detract from the surroundings. Approval of the conditional use would require building and zoning permits to be reviewed and approved per the Harrison zoning regulations. If Planning Commission makes a positive, well, if Planning Commission approves this application for the used truck lot, our staff recommends the following conditions be submitted as conditions of the approval. The business will pave all car/truck display areas. No cars or trucks will be parked on grass areas or within the public rights of way. Sign applications will be submitted and approved per code. No signs or banners will be placed on the fence facing I seventy-four. Any changes to the exterior of the building will be approved by building and zoning before initiated. And the business will adhere to all B business zoning regulations.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for the approval with the stipulation that those six conditions are met.
I'll second that.
And under discussion there, as everyone knows, if you know where this is at, Randy Lane's Auto Body, which Randy and I don't own anymore, but Randy's Auto Body is in the middle. This building is on the left, and then there's a used car lot on the right, so I think it meets everything that's out there right now. And it's set up against Schultz's foundation. Yeah, they own the house.
Anything else? Okay, Ms. Knock?
Yay.
Mr. McMurdo?
Yay.
Mr. Graff?
Yay.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Okay, motion approved with conditions.
And finally, we have the zone change from R zero to R one with a PUD-dash R-E-Z, R-E-S overlay on a Carolina Trace. This is the Oakland Hills Residential Development. We get the staff report for this. I think we need to get at least some of this in the record because the public hearing is not an official record of our meeting.
Okay.
And again, just.
Uh, this was talked about in our public hearing section. All proposed zone changes with a PUD overlay are approved by Planning Commission and City Council per section eleven thirty-nine oh four of the Harrison zoning regulations. The applicant is requesting approval to change the zoning on the property from R zero to R one with a PUD R-E-S overlay. The zoning change and planned unit development designation requires approval from Planning Commission and City Council. The submission represents the preliminary plan. The Planning Commission would make a recommendation with or without stipulations to City Council for its approval or denial. City Council would then consider this as a preliminary submission and either approve with stipulations or deny. The City Council approval of the preliminary plan with or without stipulations would then require the applicant to return to Planning Commission for consideration of a final plan. Planning Commission would then make a recommendation to City Council for their consideration of the final plan. City Council's denial of this preliminary plan would result, would result in the measure failing and the applicant waiting at least six months before a new preliminary plan may be submitted to Planning Commission. Oakland Hills Development is requesting to establish a PUD with the intent to create two hundred fifty-two home master plan community. We've gone over all of the lots. There will be different areas. Single-family buildings would be similar in quality and scope to those examples provided, which you've all seen tonight. Pedestrian access and circulation, sidewalks will be constructed along the street in front of each home and at the time of construction, except for the ten custom lots. Vehicular access and circulation, all streets except for the ten custom homes shall be public and maintained by the city of Harrison, and street parking would be allowed. The streets for the ten custom homes may be private and maintained by the HOA. Access to most homes would provide a minimum of four parking, parking spaces consisting of garage, driveway, and off-street spaces. Parking would also be provided in the amenity areas. Lighting, street lighting would be provided throughout the site using standard streetlights. These are specifically designed to prevent excess light pollution. Entry features, trees, and other landscape features would be illuminated using low-voltage landscape lighting. Amenity areas would feature additional landscape lighting for safety and aesthetics. Landscaping, yard trees would be installed per the residential PUD agreement, and the amenity areas would be professionally designed and landscaped. Entry features and the frontage along Carolina Trace Road would be landscaped to provide an attractive front door to the community. Existing trees in each section would be preserved, where landscape information will be provided later in this report. Trash containers, trash and garbage will be placed in individual sanitary containers stored inside and shall not be permitted to remain in the public view except on days of trash collection. The amenity areas would use residential-type sanitary conditions that would also remain shielded from public view except on days of trash collection. No permanent dumpsters are permitted in the community. This condition does not apply to temporary dumpsters being used on lots owned by the developer or a builder while construction is actively taking place. Homeowners Association consisting of all dwelling unit lot owners is required to be established for the entire PUD. The HOA for the PUD shall own and maintain all common areas, facilities, and amenities. The HOA Board would review and approve any architectural modifications or site improvement. The HOA would maintain any landscaping, fencing, and monument signs located within the right-of-way. The traffic study provided by Choice One Engineering was attached and given to the members. Recommendations are on page eight of the report and have been reviewed and confirmed by the city's contract engineer, JMA. A ground-mounted sign is proposed for the entrance to the property along with custom street and stop signs throughout the community. Trail and amenity signs are also proposed and would match the design of the community. The amenities, which were talked about earlier, would include internal trails, dog parks, and possibly a pickleball court that promote individuals and families having time together. Let's see, this is, let's, you want me to read the list of specifications that they corrected?
Now, if you could, let's just put in that all specs recommended by, by building department have been complied with, with, I think, without exception, haven't they? Or, or were there some? Maybe just, let's just.
Read it.
Read it, the ones that have not been corrected.
Okay. And, and a lot of this was gone over in the public hearing also.
Correct.
So, the items that were not corrected at the time of the report, the water department requested an area depicted with an easement for a future booster pump station south of Hatch Court and east of Carolina Trace. Actually, that was corrected. I apologize. south of Hatch Court and east of Carolina Trace. Um, actually, that was corrected. I apologize. Um, let's see. A valve would be needed to separate the high-pressure zone from the township elevated tower and the low-pressure zone from New Haven Road. That would be in the final plan. Yeah, under landscape. Yeah. The landscape plans do not provide sufficient detail as required in Harrison codified ordinances, chapter eleven sixty-seven. Uh, trees may not be in rights of way, must be in yards. Uh, that correction is still needed. Plantings along the entirety of the villa's north boundary regardless of existing tree line. Right, that was corrected in the public hearing. Um, the H O A document does not contain all the exhibits. That'll be corrected in the final plan. Or would be. Um, uh, we requested that the townhomes, all siding shall be fiber cement. That was not corrected. Um, townhome entry wraps text needs corrected to depict that first two buildings on each side of the entry will be wrapped with water table. Um, let's see, examples of re, uh, rear, sorry. They're provided that tonight. Um, and they provided the line of sight. Okay, all of this was addressed in the public hearing. Shannon, is there anything else you want me to touch on? This was all done in the public hearing.
I just wanted to point out several items. Um, you know, I think residents are, um, thinking that our department did not diligently try to get the plan and maybe did. Um, we have some between congruity of, uh, the comprehensive plan, which is a, is a guideline, is a, you know, suggestions that industry adopted, some we have not. Um, the, I think they tried to address many of those. I think the outstanding issue of plenty of lots. Um, the U D, uh, certainly, you know, we, we have the, uh, ability to try to negotiate larger lots, and they tried to address that with some of the other ones, um, facing walking fern in Carolina Trace and, and the areas of the village. Um, so I just wanted, like, you know, we don't have a, in our code, um, a requirement for a lot. So in essence, we have not, uh, we've got portion of the comprehensive plan. That's not to say we can't consider the comprehensive plan, but ask, we don't have that in our code. If the developer was to develop this as an R one, which basically the R O is a holding zone, and we then go to R one, um, as a fallback if they don't submit a P U D. So if they were to submit an R one across the entirety of it, um, that would basically be, those, those lots would be, uh, point two nine acres throughout the development, um, which would get us, uh, similar to, uh, Trails of Whitewater, similar to that. But, uh, but most of those are R one, uh, that, that's how it's owned. Uh, the, the dries development to the north was actually done as a P U D. So they have different lot sizes and different, uh, types of home within that development. So many of them are point two nine acres or greater, and, and some are less. So that was, uh, how that was dealt with there. Um, when this was brought to the city, this parcel several years ago, up here forty years now, that was talked about earlier, um, the, the idea was they would come into the jet. Uh, our jet agreement allows a lot of things, uh, including industrial, including, um, retirement facilities. Uh, it, it's basically treated as an M one zoning. Um, and I think a lot of the residents, uh, in that area were very concerned at that time. Uh, and we listened to them about that concern because we didn't know, we really didn't have a plan that was submitted to us for consideration as part of the jet application. So we couldn't really deal with that. We only knew that there could be other uses besides, uh, uh, the retirements, and that's what we were talking about at the time. So we had encouraged the property owner then to consider not putting it in jet, but bringing it into the city so that this could be zoned residential use. Um, and, and, and I think that that is trying to protect the neighbors so they don't get industrial or whatever next to them. Now, of course, their concerns are the larger lots, the accidents, and we know what their concerns are. But I just wanted to preface the whole thing about how this got into the city and why it did, and why our city council at that time thought it was advantageous to make it residential as opposed to allowing it M one uses in a jet setting. Um, so I, I just wanted to say that, and then there, in summary, there are some items here, uh, if you want to read them.
All right, yes, yeah. Um, if planning commission makes a positive recommendation to city council for preliminary approval of the R O zoning designation being changed to the R one zoning designation with the P U D res overlay, we recommend the following conditions to be submitted as part of the final development plan. Uh, the requests in the outline above highlighted in red would be corrected and provided. Home sites numbers forty through seventy in the villa section would be at least one-third of an acre. All other villa home sites would be at least one-quarter of an acre. All signage throughout the community would be reviewed and approved by the building and zoning department. All items in the attached P U D text with corrections would become part of the approved application. All changes would be, would require a second review by planning commission and city council in a final development format.
I do. So i- i- in the conditions that were put in there, um, number two, uh, asked for lots forty through seventy to be uh, a certain size, and then the balanced, sorry.
Um, I don't know that our materials labeled forty through seventy.
It's the ones in front of, in front of, facing Carolina Trace, and then the ones facing Land Hill South.
All the way to the corner.
All the way to the corner. So.
Here.
That's correct.
So that whole L.
Okay.
So the whole, yes, yeah. And so what, w- we've already increased the size considerably for two-thirds of that area, uh, all but maybe ten of those lots, or twelve of those lots. Um, to increase all of those to be, we, I think, it's, uh, I don't have it here in frame, a quarter acre?
A third.
One-third for all of those, and everything else to be a quarter, uh, would cause us to lose probably another thirty lots. And so that's not something that, that we would be able to agree to. Uh, we've agreed to everything else through this whole process, but we're not able to agree. We're not, we're not able to agree to that because it, it just, it, it's, it's a math equation to a certain extent, and, and it would cause us too much financial harm to be able to proceed with the development, losing those. So what we, what we could do is if it's a perimeter thing, I mean, we could, we could increase the size of the ones that we didn't on the north boundary uh, to seventy foot, um, which would be, um, the ones that are along the trees, just, yeah. Uh, as she's, as, as Ms. Knox pointing out, um, sorry, I don't have a diagram to show. But we could increase those sizes to seventy foot in width, um, which would cause us to lose some lots, but, uh.
That would be eleven of them.
That would be eleven of them. Sounds about right.
Let me ask you a question. Uh, I'm just curious. All the homes that are going to be built, that you're proposing to build on the golf course side? How wide are those?
Those are fifty-five foot wide.
So they're twenty-five foot narrower than the houses that are currently on Harmony Drive?
Right. But the homes aren't probably quite as wide. They might be deeper than those on Harmony, but they're probably not quite as wide. Cause on Harmony Drive, there are homes that are within close to fifteen feet apart, and we would be no closer than fifteen feet apart with ours. So the houses will fit the lot, I guess, is my point. And it's not every home on Harmony, but there are some that are, are getting close to that fifteen foot. I didn't go with the tape measure to be exact, but.
What, what is your smallest lot size as far as acreage?
Fifty-five to one-twenty, isn't it?
As far as acres.
Fifty-five to one-twenty?
Two. Point one-five-two. One-sixth of an acre.
It's how, it's how?
About a sixth of an, a sixth of an acre, point one-five-two.
So you're putting six-point-six houses per acre?
No, not, not, that's not necessarily true because we have right-of-way and open space and all that. So the, it's about this, it's about, I mean, that, that is a prototypical size for what we've had, again, down the street with our villa product that we've done, uh, that we've shown pictures of and all that.
I just, again, uh, the, the, the houses on the, uh, west side of Carolina Trace, um, I, I don't have a whole lot of problem with that area, except I don't like vinyl on any of it. Cause I think it makes it look cheap, and that there's no way in hell that I would vote. Let me, let me, there's, there's no way I would consider voting approval of this if there's vinyl siding up there.
And as I said, I agree.
Out on New Haven Road, and it's almost repulsive to drive down New Haven Road and look at them houses. Like, I can't believe that many people bought them.
That was actually one of our recommendations in the P U D.
And so, and so we've accepted that, no vinyl.
Okay.
That's what, that's what we're speaking to.
And you're fine, I'm sorry.
Someone's saying.
So number two is the only one I would like to alter.
I, I, I heard you saying, Jerry, I didn't hear anything else.
My question is, you object for the vinyl on the side of the building, which you said was awful. What about looking into the back of the houses? Which is what we're doing. They're actually giving a tree and it's a buffer zone between.
But there's gonna be no vinyl on them either. There's no vinyl on them either. No, 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 we do know for sure, cause we're not gonna prove it if there's vinyl. Right?
That's, you're voting now because of the vinyl. Look, you're still looking in the back of the houses. Where everything is displayed, is on display, the trampolines, the, the swing sets, whatever, you know, it is, the vinyl is.
Your vision's better than mine. Your vision must be a lot better than mine. I can't see what's across the street from me.
Hey Jerry, I, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on what you're voting on. You, you just iterated a stipulation. It would be one-third acre lots on the street, West Carolina Trace, and walking fern. And then this gentleman said that wasn't acceptable. So I'm confused as to exactly what you guys are gonna be voting on.
I ex, I expect to see, uh, that, I, I'll call it lot number one, right there on the corner of, 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 of the entryway, all the way around to lot number twenty-eight. I expect to see all those a third of an acre.
I was gonna say, to, to answer, to answer your question, we're not voting on anything yet because we don't have a motion in front of us.
That's right.
But yeah, because, because the motion will be tailored to what we're gonna, yeah.
Well, for the purpose of discussion then, uh, and put all your guns away, cause you haven't heard my vote, but I would move, we approve what's here. And remember, we gotta vote on it. We did the same thing with the, uh, laundromat, okay? So in order to have a discussion, otherwise we can continue talking the rest of the night. But we need a motion on the floor to either recommend to the council or not recommend. So I'll move that we recommend to council to approve.
You can have a second and then discuss.
I'll second.
And I think we've had plenty of discussion the whole night. So with that being said, I will call for the question on the vote.
I thi, I think Jerry wants to vote with the recommendations as presented in the staff report, correct?
Well, I, I do wanna, I, I do wanna, uh, put the provision in there that there's no vinyl anywhere.
It's in there.
In the project.
It's in there.
It's in there.
And I do wanna put that the lots one through twenty-eight, I believe it is.
Forty through seventy.
Forty through seventy.
There's twenty-eight lots, twenty, twenty-eight or twenty-nine lots, that they would all be one-third of an acre.
So that will be, that will be the ex.
What's that?
The, the size of the lots, the balance of development in the village, do you wanna address that?
Yeah. I'd like to see them be bigger, but, um, I. Why on the golf course all be a third of an acre? Why not do it all the way around the outside?
Um, and, and we've.
Come on.
What if we do is walk away?
Right. Um, right now, I'm hearing for discussion purposes that your smallest lot is about a sixth of an acre. And we've got in our staff report, um, a suggestion that Jerry has put forth that everything be a third of an acre.
Third acre, only, uh.
On, on those.
Only on the lots facing Carolina Trace and facing Land Hill South.
Facing Land Hill South. Um, I'm just gonna throw it out there for.
Go ahead.
Members of council in the vote. Is there an in-between? That would be acceptable, perhaps to Mr. Wilson and to the developer?
Well, what, what, what I had proposed was, and I thought there would be an in-between from where we are today to what was in the staff report, is that if we, we made the balance of those lots, which is roughly eleven of them, they would probably turn into seven of them. So we'd lose four more lots and make them seventy-foot wide lots down through there, which would increase the size. Getting it close, it wouldn't be probably quite a third of an acre. Um, but it would increase that size. And we have common space back behind those lots, right? There's a twenty-foot common space that's right in, right behind those, that is virtually part of the lot, but we put it in common so the homeowners association could make, make sure that the buffer trees were alive. Again, the whole place is all mowed all at the same time. So it, from a maintenance standpoint, it doesn't make any difference. We were just making sure that if those trees died in the future, that the H O A could replace them and not have to worry about the homeowner barking about it. So.
So, yeah, so.
So, eh, eh, what I'm, I guess what I'm saying to you is that the lots are really twenty feet deeper. We just made it common area though, so we could make sure we maintain the tree buffer.
Okay, so what, what you're saying, I, I think, is a, along this boundary right here, you could, you could live with going from eleven down to seven.
Ma, by making them s, basically, we're gonna make them seventy-foot wide lots.
Right, by making them seventy-five foot lots, but then to get the acreage, you would need to take out that buffer area and make that part of the lot.
If, if so desired, yes, but we could.
Right, okay.
I'm just trying to explain why they're smaller because of that, so.
I'm not, I'm not a math genius, but, uh, how, how many lots would you lose if you made a minimum seventy-foot wide of all of them?
We were talking about it earlier, thirty-five to forty.
I have no problem with that, do you?
Yep, I do.
Okay.
Just being honest.
You know my position.
No vinyl.
It's gonna clear motion.
Right.
We have, we have a motion, but we don't have a stipulation.
Yeah, and, and, and I guess, um, that's the thing too, is we've got one recommendation to council, I think, so.
Well, if anybody wants to amend my motion, you can do that.
Right, 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 right. No, and, and I'm just, yeah, I'm just.
You can, you can amend the motion I made that's already been seconded. You can, uh, mo, uh, move to amend it, and then all you'd have to do is vote on the amendment and get approved, and then vote on the motion as amended.
Okay, so I will amend, I'll make a motion to amend.
Okay.
Jerry's motion to, um, require those eleven lots along there to be reconfigured down to seven, to have the seventy-foot width on those. No, they're, they're the ones that, uh, back up against.
The ones along Carolina Trace are already wider.
These are the ones facing Land Hill South.
Yeah, Land Hill South.
These, these small eleven ones down here will be seven.
Yeah, was that clear?
Yeah, the other ones had already been enlarged, man. We, those are already seventy-five to ninety-four.
From where to where?
No, on the, she said Carolina Trace.
You gotta count them.
I can't hear you, buddy. Right now, unless he amends it.
I don't think any of them are actually a sixth on golf course side.
Gotta, gotta be these ones.
With the common space.
Unless they amend it.
It's somewhere in here, right?
Those will be about fifty-five foot wide. Twenty-five foot less than yours. Well, to be honest with you, not really. Well, to be honest with you, not really, because you've got the entire golf course between those houses and yours. They, Land Hill South don't have that luxury. But what was your amendment? For those eleven lots?
Eleven lots.
It'll be down to seven, because you'll lose four of them.
Right.
Not to me, it didn't. Not to me, it didn't. We're talking about that first lot on the corner, all the way around to the twenty-eighth lot being a third of an acre. That's what I said, I'd like to get, that's why I said I'd like to get approved, but- I don't necessarily think we're accommodating, because he just said he'd lose thirty-some lots, which he- If you go to, no, he said if you go to, if we tell him to go to seventy-foot wide on all of them, he said we'd lose about thirty-one or thirty-two lots.
Can I, can I help clarify what's been said so far, please? So, Mr. Wilson made, made a motion, right? Mr. Graff is, which was seconded, Mr. Graff has now made his motion to amend Mr. Wilson's motion. And his motion is to require us to enlarge the lots that have not already been enlarged in the past, that are gonna be at least seventy feet wide, approximately eleven to seven, right? On the north boundary, on the eastern side of the villas. So that's what Mr. Graff has- It's going to be less than a third.
Yeah, it's gonna, again-
That depends on which lot, and depends on if it's got any radius. I can't, I mean, it depends if we include the common area back in-
Eighty-four hundred square feet. Which is pretty close to- When you, when you figure the lots, because of easements and everything else.
I'm a little, I'm a little confused, so are we not, are we just foregoing number two on the recommendations? And amending it for yours instead?
I don't know, why there's, alright.
Yes.
They said they were not agreed to that.
How many you got planned right now, the way it is, on the forty acres?
One-thirty-three. That, that, it doesn't work out that way because of right-of-way and other things, so. Third, right, that's green space, but then you have right-of-way, so. No, it's more than that.
It'd lose about thirty-seven lots.
Thirty-six to thirty-seven, depending how they work out.
That's a lot more than you could build, unless we, if we enforce the acre, one acre per, you're building a hell of a lot more houses during that theory than you would the one acre per. Because you'd have less than forty. And I understand your business, I understand.
Infrastructure costs of what's going in, it just-
Sold real estate for a long time.
Yeah.
So, as a reminder, we, we, we started at two-eighty-one, went to two-eighty-three, went down to two-sixty, then we went down to two-fifty-two for you this evening, and now another four down from there. At the beginning of the evening, we were two-fifty-two, now we're down to two-forty-eight. So just to put it in perspective, we've given thirty-three lots at this point in time, which would be the approximate twelve to thirteen percent of our development. With no open space requirement, correct? With no open space requirement, correct? Or amenities. Or trails.
So I, um, if I could reword my amendment, we, we replace number two in the staff recommendations with the following. All lots in the northeast corner of the village, villas section, which abut the Land Hill South development, shall be seventy feet minimum in width.
You're talking about the ones here, right here, should be a third of an acre, what you should say.
Well, a- again, you're saying a third of an acre, that's a deal breaker for them. I'm suggesting that we, that we suggest-
I don't think it's a deal breaker on them, just on those, it's a deal breaker for them if we tell them-
We'll, well, we'll lose another two or three with that calculation?
I think you'd lose four, I think.
No, we lose four with the seventy-foot, we would lose, we'd lose, well, we would wanna take the common area back and make it part of the lot, since it's kind of functioning as part of the lot. So, I mean, that's the thing here, right? You guys are talking about s- square feet of, of a lot, and you're talking about the backyard. The front yard's gonna be still where it is, the back of the home's still where it's gonna be. We have twenty feet of common space that's not part of the lot, but it kind of functions as part of the lot, so, I mean, we're kind of, I don't wanna say we're mincing words here, but it's, a seventy-foot wide lot's gonna give us, with a forty-foot house, is gonna give us fifteen-foot side yards, gonna give thirty feet in between the homes. That's more than the homes in Harmony. Because the lots, the homes are only gonna be forty feet wide that we build in there. Twelve more. Two-fifty-two to two-forty. Right, so that would be two, that would be two-forty versus our original two-eighty-ish. Right, because of radiuses.
But the lots of, lots of, uh, that abut the golf course, you're saying that you can't change that from fifty-five to seventy or eighty foot?
Financially, no. I mean, there's, I mean, it's, and it's side yard, right? The homes are still gonna be forty feet, right? And so if, if we're at, if we're at fifty-five feet, we're fifteen feet in between the houses. If we're at seventy feet, we're thirty feet in between the houses. And that side yard isn't what most people want, right? The, the side yard doesn't typically benefit a homeowner very much, it's the front yard and the rear yard. And, you know, it, it's, most every other lifestyle, as we call it, development that we've ever done has been in the fifty to sixty-foot range, and, and we're in that. We, we're smack dab, that's, that's the sweet spot for, um, for this type of product, because the folks are, they're living out their backyard, and, and they're gonna go play golf, and they're gonna pack 'em, go to Florida, and they're gonna do all that stuff, so.
The thing about having a little wider lot is you don't get into the problem I got into when I built a shed, and my one good friend, who's a contractor, told me I had to be at least three foot off the fence line. So I built a damn shed, and I found out that I had to be six feet off the fence line. And I put in a five-thousand-dollar shed with lighting and everything else in it.
You know what the, going with the good news is here?
Well, the bad news is if-
Can't build a shed in our neighborhood. We won't allow sheds.
I don't like that either.
But, but they don't, I need a lawnmower to stash in it, because we're taking care of the grounds.
I got a shed you could have a workshop in. But if I had, if my lot was only, if my lot was only fifty-five foot lot, wide, that shed would sit in the middle of my backyard.
Right, but that's part of the thing, is that we don't have sheds, we don't have playsets, we don't have trampolines. There won't be any kids in that part of the development, sir.
I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna go ahead, and I, I think we need to just take a vote, um, yeah, and, uh-
Excuse me, folks, folks, folks.
I think we need to take a vote, um, I'm gonna go ahead, so we can get, so you can hear what we're voting, yes or no. Um, I'm gonna, uh, second Andy's, uh, motion, um, and then that'll require us to go and-
You had to vote on the amendment, then?
Yep.
My amendment is to, um, amend Jerry's motion, um, to replace item two with the following. All lots in the northeast corner of the village, villas section, which abut the Land Hill South development, shall be a minimum of seventy feet in width. Again, that's my, that is, that is my amendment.
I guess my only question to that is, to you guys, if I'm gonna signify that one lot on the corner being number one, uh, those ones that face Carolina Trace all the way down, aren't those a third of an acre? Okay, alright. So, so in other words, if they're over seventy feet, with his, with his amendment, you could reduce them to seventy feet? I'm just- I got you. Okay. Okay, vote on your amendment.
Alright, so we've got a second?
Yep.
Alright.
So now just procedurally, we vote on the amendment first?
Vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the motion as amended.
Right, so that if my amendment fails, then we vote on Jerry's original.
That's correct.
Okay, just so we're all clear.
Yes, it's addressed. Out, they've requests in the outline, the light, highlighted in red will be corrected, so that, and number one, it is stating that those will be corrected. No vinyl.
And no matter how this votes goes, I mean, if, if it's, if his amendment is approved, and my motion is approved, we then vote if we wanna recommend that to council. Everybody understand? Just like we did with the laundromat. The motion was made to approve it, but then when we voted, if we're gonna recommend it to council, it was voted down. Alright, so that's where we're at here. So we're gonna need, actually, you know, three votes. Go ahead, you're the boss.
Okay, so on accepting the amendment, someone needs to make a motion on that, because-
You already made it.
We already, it's already been-
Motion's already been made and seconded.
Okay, so that's what you did, okay. Ms. Knock?
Nay.
Uh, Mr. McMurdo?
Nay.
Mr. Graff?
Yay.
I didn't hear the other two votes.
Nay.
Nays.
Mr. Wilson?
I don't understand why we're doing that. You know what, what you don't understand is regardless of how I vote now, is when we vote on my motion, is what's gonna make the difference. Because we can vote on all this now and vote it down, when it comes to my motion, it's gotta be voted for or against to go recommend to council. So for the purpose of that, I'll vote along with the chairman and say yay. And you'll figure it all out in just a second, don't get nervous.
So on the original motion-
Well, now, now, now it's not amended.
Okay, so now you vote on the motion.
Right.
In the original motion, someone should probably state that, a recommendation to city council.
Hell, I forgot it.
I, I've got it if you don't, Jerry.
I, I, well, I, I, I made the motion to approve this with the stipulations. That wasn't what was in that motion, but- That's correct. No vinyl.
Number two as it is, correct?
That's correct. That's what the motion was, and I'm gonna stick with it.
On, on our sheet is the staff report, which I think Jerry's motion was as written in our staff report. So that, that's where we get clarity on that. Um, that, that is what the staff report says.
That's what the staff report says, that's the motion.
Correct.
Okay, so. So Jerry made the motion. Alright, Ms. Knock, on the original motion?
On the original, this, yay.
Uh, Mr. McMurdo?
Uh, nay.
Mr. Graff?
Um, I, I think your conditions, I've got no problem with those, yay.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
So that was a motion for a-
Favorable recommendation.
To city council.
To city council, with those, yes, with the conditions listed in the statement.
What now?
No. Not approved.
As amended.
So it doesn't pass? Okay, then, then I think we've got, got an issue here, because I think, at least I thought, that my amendment was denied, and so that when we had that second vote, everyone thought we were voting on Jerry's original motion, which is not correct. So therefore, I'm gonna make a motion for a revote on both motions, so that everyone's intentions are very clear. And everyone recognizes that. so that everyone's intentions are very clear, and everyone recognizes that.
Alright, so the motion, first motion that Mr. Burgo presented was, uh, the large lots facing Walking Fur, and then the rest of the lots staying as they are, along the plant track.
No, we didn't, we didn't have a motion seconded from Brian.
Seconded so we could vote?
Yeah, he, Brian seconded my motion.
Yeah, and there was a vote on that motion. And it was two to two.
Right. And at least I thought that that meant...
He's right, he's right, that, it goes to the applicant.
Okay.
So to reconsider that, you would have to take a motion to reconsider that vote?
My vote?
Well, let me put it another way, does anyone, I'm happy either way.
I'm, I'm voting no.
Are you, are you, would, would you change your vote?
If they wrapped all the way around with the, the same acreage? Um, but, as far as changing my vote from yes to no?
The, okay, again, if, if everyone's fine with the way we, I'm fine with the way we voted.
I'm not gonna confuse how I, how I voted now.
Right, but you can't, that's the first vote that we took, right?
I thought we, I thought we were gonna move on this, on the, on the project, and then we were gonna vote if we recommended it to city council.
Yes, you voted on the amendment, so that was two to two. Then you continue going on as you said.
As amended.
Okay, so that... So, so, that's fine, but when we voted on that second one, I thought we were voting on Jerry's original motion as unamended. You think when we voted that second vote, that we were doing yours?
Let's do it, let's do it this way. I move we reconsider the project. And we need a second to do that.
Table one is?
They can get, they can get all these lots up to a third of an acre. What they're gonna do is they're gonna take away all this common, it's a community.
They think it's just too high density?
No, maybe we do need a lot, I don't know.
They're gonna do what you want, they're just gonna make a long...
Is he this to an area of...
Yeah, right.
That's a common area.
Right, but they're just gonna extend...
Yeah, if you take away this common area...
There's a third of an acre.
They're gonna get that third of an acre, that's why I wanted the, the width.
What they want is the width, these people out here want the width, they don't want it to get a lot deeper.
Staff report, did it say a quarter acre on every, all the rest of it?
The staff report says forty through seventy...
Members of the plant commission?
Are a third of an acre, and the rest are a quarter of an acre.
Okay.
Um, everyone, can I, can I, whoops? Can we get some, can we get everyone's attention here, please? Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Members of plant commission, can we, uh, request a table? Is that the official term? Not a continuance?
I think you're talking with him, what you wanted to do is go back and draw the lots to make it sure as to how many there would be against Walking Fur, and if there were any adjustments to be made, uh, in what they have an opportunity to redraw it and reconsider, uh, if the next...
I don't know. Well, if we, if, if we vote on the staff's recommendation of a third of an acre for those outlining Carolina Trace and what's, and the Land Hill South, and the staff report says all other lots are a quarter of an acre, if we vote on that and, and approve that and recommend that to city council, your company's gonna have a decision to make if you want to do the project or not, correct?
Correct. But I'd rather let us go do the homework and be able to come back with better information, and then have you vote.
Uh, people, come on, hey, 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 hey.
Show some respect here, come on, he, he, these guys have been pretty nice coming out here and getting, getting hell from us for months, years. But, 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 uh, so, so, uh...
I have that right, I believe, to ask for a table, correct?
No.
I don't?
The board here, the board here has to make the move to table. The audience can't move the table up anything.
No way to, okay.
I mean, Robert's Rules of Order state that the board here, one of us four can move to table. Uh, if, if one of us do that, it's non-debatable, and it votes, no discussion, nothing.
Yep.
So, if one of them want to do that, I would, I would just soon vote on what we've got. And if your company wants to come back with a different plan, showing, uh, less lots, wider lots, that's your option. But we've been doing this for what, two years? Uh, and I don't think these people's opinion's gonna change, and, um, I happen to sit on city council, and...
I understand.
I'm, I support the residents of my city, as I should, uh, unless they, unless they really get dumb, which I don't believe anybody in here is. Uh, so I would, I would move we, we vote on if we're gonna recommend this to city council or not.
Um, since, I hear you, Jerry, um, I'm gonna make the motion, um, to table it, uh, simply because... Can I talk, folks? I've, simply because these folks have came in, they've spent a year and a half, um, approximately?
Two.
Two. Okay, trying to work on this, um, word down, they, they've, they've done everything that, um, planning commission...
Yeah, but, since, since you made a motion to table, there is no discussion, and you call for a vote.
We'll call for a vote. Well, I'm sorry, we can't, I need a second.
No, motion to table doesn't need a second.
I'll see, just motion to table.
Doesn't need a second, it's non-debatable, and you just vote.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
And we're voting to...
Whether to table the item or not?
Yay.
Ms. Knock?
Nay.
Mr. McMurdo?
Nay.
Mr. Graff?
Yay.
That's it?
So, it is, uh, tabled. Correct, two yes? No, you have it correct?
I think there was three yeses, Leonard, there's three yeses.
I'm sorry?
I said nay.
You said nay, and you said yay?
No.
You had two nays, two yeses.
So it's two to two. So it's tabled? Yay?
Yay.
Nay? Nay, nay, it's two to two.
Mr. Graff was a yay, Mr. Wilson was a yay, Ms. Knock was a nay, and Mr. McMurdo was a nay.
So it's two to two, which means the recommendation to council is to heaven. Well, no, you, you have tabled it.
Correct.
There is no recommendation.
There is no recommendation.
There is no recommendation.
They have the ability to go back to the drawing board and, uh, recalculate, redraw, and resubmit.
And I think, I think we've made it perfectly clear on what we like to see come in, and what we'd like to see them do. And they have, by us tabling it, giving them the opportunity, they can go back, reconfigure whatever they want to do. If they feel it's not feasible for them to do it, to make the kind of money they need to make, then they won't be coming back. But if they do, they'll come back to us, we'll have the meeting again, and see what they present. I think that's fair.
I'd like to just say that the number of people we have here tonight, we can continue to multiply that if that's what it takes for the city council to recognize that the people of Harrison are against...
I think we understand it.
Who are against this project, and, and evidently we didn't have to hit numbers tonight to demonstrate that.
Oh, I think you did. You're welcome. By the way, the next time we have this meeting, I'm gonna ask the mayor if we can have it down at the American Legion Hall, where we can seat three hundred people. I want everybody, I want everybody to be in here.
We're still in a meeting here, folks. Hey, folks, folks, we're still in a meeting here, if, if you could hold on for a couple more minutes?
A motion to adjourn?
Guess not.
You got an adjourn, and we, we completed your adjourned, didn't we?
I would hope.
A motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.
No, thank you, good to see you too. Thank you, appreciate your input.
I'll second.
Mr. Wilson? Yay. Ms. Knock?
Uh, yay.
Mr. McMurdo? Mr. Graff?